I'd like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Hatch, who asked to be excused tonight. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Judd to leave his invocation followed by the pledge by Councilman Adams. If you'd all like to stand and join us, you can.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity. We have to meet together this evening for our city council meeting. We ask that Thy blessings will be with us and Thy Spirit will be with us. We ask that Thou will help us to make decisions that are beneficial to us. Please bless our first responders and our city staff that we can all work together to make this a better place to live. We ask that Thou will bless us with moisture at this time, that we can have the rain that we need. We say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge.
"With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Councilman Judd, Councilman Adams.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is Call to the Public. City Attorney.
Mayor, Council, any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the City Council as a whole and not any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of City Council. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the Call to the Public, individual City Council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda.
Thank you. And I do have one. Mr. Robert. Are we gonna start the clock while he's walking up here? Or we give him? I gotta pick on you, Doug.
I know. Hey, Mayor, Council, Administration. Nice to see you all. I'm here again. For those who are asking, what? He's here again? Yes, he's here again. Come see the cars on Friday night. The Cruz deus will leave the church at 5:30 PM. We'll have police escort coming out. It'll be going down to the Hatch Toyota, and they are sponsoring a Burger burn, which the whole public is, everybody is invited. Come get a pulled pork sandwiches, I think, is what they're gonna actually have. But they have promised that they'll have plenty of food, and everybody should have a good time. And we really would like to see everybody line up that doesn't wanna be down there. They wanna watch the cars go by. We'd love to see them line up on both sides of the street. It's not very far. It doesn't take very long. You'll probably have 20 minutes, maybe 30, cars going by, and there'll be a lot of cars. Hopefully, we have 150 in that. And there's a lot of cars that will be in that cruise that will not be at the car show on Saturday. So if you wanna see them, that's when to see them. Then again, on Saturday, we have our car show. We are hoping or expecting 200 entries, so hopefully, we get that many. We want to thank the city for you guys and Public Works and the Police Department and Administration as a whole. You guys always support us 150%. We're grateful. We're happy. We've always been very fortunate to live in a city that supports us very, very well. And the community is supporting us really well, too. We're getting more donations this year than we had last year. And all of the proceeds go to the local Salvation Army office. And so it does good things in this area. So I know you've heard it before. That's why I said, yes, again, see the cars. And you won't have to hear from me for a little while. I'll probably come back and say, thanks. Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next item on the agenda under Special Offensive Recognition of some state championship wrestlers. If we can have the both coaches, please come up here and tell us a little bit about these kids, if you would, please. You both are just looking at me. Nobody in the back row is moving.
When I saw Brandon, I thought he was coming to do Call to the Public to complain about one of the council members here. I wasn't sure if it was me or Bryce. So it would of course be me.
No, we thank you for this opportunity to be here to recognize these kids. We've got two, one from the junior high and one from the high school. They just both happen to have the same last name, which is awesome. It's definitely a family of wrestlers. So first one we want to recognize is Johnny Wilhelm. Wrestled the White Mountain Leagues, was a White Mountain League champion at 83 pounds, realized that his best shot going into the state championships. So when we go to the junior high state championship, that's every junior high in the state, so there's like 65 teams there. So he ended up winning that tournament at a 78-pound weight class. So it was awesome to watch just the dedication, because what happens is with the junior highs, our season technically ends in December, and these kids come back. We do morning practices, so they're coming back at 6:00 AM before school. They practice going into these tournaments, so they're putting a lot of hard work and dedication in preparation for this tournament. So it's awesome to see that kind of work pay off. And then this, the other one, you guys have seen her. She's been here three separate times. So junior high school, she was a three-time state champ. She went in this year as a freshman, obviously, cut weight. I think she's down to, what, 100?
She started off at 107.
107.
And then as the season went on, her body was adjusting, and so she was weighing in like 105, 104. And so after Christmas, you get two pounds. She could make it down pretty easy to 102 pounds, which is the 100-pound weight class.
Yeah, so she ended up cutting down there. She wrestled like, I mean, she's tough as nails. But I think the thing was with her this year, going into these tournaments, John's always been in her corner for every year, every, probably every match she's ever wrestled. And obviously, he had some health issues, ended up having a heart attack right before these tournaments came into play. And so she had to overcome not only dad not ever being in the corner, but also just the competition itself. And so watching her overcome that and just persevering and having that determination of what she wanted was awesome to see. She ended up beating an undefeated senior in the finals. And so, yeah, it was definitely a great accomplishment on both of their parts. But I think you're gonna see both of these two back several times over the next years to come. So hopefully, we'll be bringing some team championships back this way, too.
Well, we want to congratulate each of them. We got them a little wrestling fly. I don't know if it's a wrestling jacket. It's gonna say wrestling on it, but if you two would come on up and... Ruthie, that one's yours. Congratulations. Great job.
Good job.
Great job. Congratulations.
Damn.
Good job, buddy.
Ruthie's ready to give a speech, too.
Only 15 minutes. We're working on our public speaking.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Holy.
Help yourself. Thank you very much.
You gotta come back up. We gotta get a picture.
Who's gonna take it?
I'm guessing the...
Mom?
Mom or the coaches, or, and Rachel.
Squeeze in.
You two wanna come up here so you don't look like you're alone out there? Have them come up here. Yeah, come on up here. All right, you two gotta be right here by the mayor, front and center. Great job.
Gentlemen, it's good to see you out and about, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I bet. All righty, next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. What consideration of resolution number R. 2025-15. Also, consideration approval, cooperate, cooperative. I was close. Purchase agreement. Consideration admitted to the Sholo City Council meeting on May 20, 2025.
Mayor, I'm gonna declare conflict because of one of the items on this I've been involved with at the county, which is my day job. So I'm gonna declare conflict on the whole consent calendar.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendars read? Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda under new business is a public hearing application submitted by White Mountain Moose Lodge for $26.50 for bingo license at 145 North White Mountain Road Suite E, Sholo, Arizona. Mrs. Hall.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. The White Mountain Moose Lodge 2650 previously held an approved bingo license for its location at 145 North White Mountain Road Suite E in Sholo. However, that license lapsed, and they must, they had to resubmit an application for a new bingo license. Unlike liquor license, which are administered by the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, bingo licenses are controlled by the Arizona Department of Revenue. The White Mountain Moose Lodge has completed the bingo license application and necessary associated documents. However, before the application can be submitted, state statutes mandates that the City Council hold a public hearing to consider approving or denying the application. After the hearing, the application is submitted to the Department of Revenue with the council's recommendation that the license be approved or disapproved. And as stated on the application form, the Moose Lodge plans to play bingo on Wednesdays and Sundays from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Copies of the entire application packet, which includes the required individual affidavits, rental agreement, Moose Lodge articles of incorporation, and bylaws, list of officers, et cetera, was attached to the council packet. And representatives of the Moose Lodge are present if you have, if any council members have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. At this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Anybody wanna comment on this? Seeing nobody spring up here, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to council for questions or motions.
Make a motion.
Councilman Judd.
I move to recommend approval to the Arizona Department of Revenue bingo section of the application submitted by White Mountain Moose Lodge 2650 for bingo license.
Got a motion? Got a second by Councilman Wipple. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. There you go. Step two, I think, somewhere in there.
I have step like seven.
Oh, okay. Just think, maybe one or two left. All righty, next item on the agenda is consideration of award of construction contract for Fools Hollow subdivision waterline replacement phase two, City of Sholo project number W. 5525. Mr. Hamza.
Mayor and Council, the 2025 city budget includes 1.25 million in funding for waterline replacement labeled Fools Hollow AC replacement phase two. The project's scope includes installing approximately 5,200 linear feet of new eight-inch C900 PVC water main, including fire hydrants, new water services, and required fittings. Scope of work also includes installing any concrete or pavement removed during the work. Works shall take place in the Fools Hollow subdivision along North 22nd Drive, West Sylvester Circle, West Thornton, North Beeman Circle, and North 22nd Way. This is the final phase of the waterline replacement in this area. The project was designed by city engineering staff with an engineer's construction estimate of 1.15 million. The project was publicly bid with the following results. Gunner Contracting LLC, $920,166.37. Western Grade LLC, $984,203.81. Apache Underground Excavating, $988,421.01. And Central Arizona Civil Construction Company at $1,157,618.01. The city has not worked with Gunner Contracting LLC and is unaware of any projects completed in the area. Staff requested additional information from Gunner Contracting, including staffing levels, equipment available for the project, and references. Gunner Contracting LLC met with the city to explain that they are a new company with employees that have completed the work, similar work within Arizona. They provided project staffing plan and a schedule to perform the work. Financial documents and evidence for bonding capabilities were also provided. Staff recommends award of the construction contract Fools Hollow waterline replacement phase two to Gunner Contracting LLC in that amount not to exceed that $920,166.37. Their bid tab is attached. I'm here for any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any questions or comments?
I've got a question.
Yes.
Did you, I maybe said this and I didn't catch it. Is Gunner Contracting, are they local?
They are based out of Taylor, Arizona. So they'd be pretty much considered local.
Is that by any chance Aaron Solomon?
He is not owner of this company. He is considered a subcontractor on the, to perform the work.
Okay. I just heard that company, but I haven't seen any work. Yes, Vice Mayor.
I move to award the construction contract for Fools Hollow waterline replacement phase two, City of Sholo project number W. 5525 to Gunner Contracting LLC in an amount not to exceed $920,166.37.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of acceptance of waterline extension agreement for North 16th Avenue. Mr. Hamza.
Thank you, Mayor. The city was approached by residents located on North 16th Avenue asking to connect to the city's water distribution system. In order for the residents to connect to the city's water system, approximately 850 linear feet of eight-inch water main extension would need to be installed. Estimates for the work were around 100,000. The city did not have a current project planned in the budget for the work. After bid savings from other capital projects were realized, the city asked the residents to partner on the project. The city would contribute $50,000 in fire hydrants towards the project in an effort to enhance fire protection in the city. The residents hired Perkins Center to install the main, and the city provided inspection and testing services for the project. Due to the location of the water main extension, other property owners may likely connect or further extend the water infrastructure in the area. Per city code, a line extension agreement may be agreed upon, which allows the original project owners the ability to recover some construction costs over the next 10 years. During that period, additional parties connecting to the line extension or further extensions will reimburse the original participating parties with a portion of the cost based on the frontage of the connecting lot. Staff recommends accepting the waterline extension agreement for North 16th Avenue waterline extension. The line extension agreement is attached, and there's also a map showing kind of the area in which that main was extended down 16th Ave. I'm here for any questions.
I don't have the map in front of me, but how far down 16th did it go? It doesn't go all the way to the end, does it?
No. So our goal eventually is to get water to this area of the city. We'd like to extend water down 16th Avenue. Our goal is to loop it back to Cougar Lane and eventually even Thornton. This is kind of long-term planning for the water infrastructure. So teaming up with the residents to get this a little further down the road was what we wanted to do. But no, it goes about 800 feet past, 600 feet past West Savage on the turnoff on 16th Ave.
And as this develops, are the people developing down that road gonna also, we're not gonna put it in there just for the fun of it, right? They're gonna help pay for it?
Well, they're paying for the rest of the improvements.
I mean, this, as it goes farther?
As this goes further on, yes. I mean, we'll see how the property develops, if there's further line extensions or not. There's actual subdivisions or developments, and they'll put it in. Developer comes in and plots a subdivision, for example, like that, then they'll put it in. The long-term goal is to get this looping northern section completed that goes around to kind of Thornton and back to Cougar.
Vice Mayor.
So were we approached by the residents down there to put this line on?
Yeah, we were approached years ago. And then, once again, probably this last year, just asking to help move water down the main. Like I said, long-term, this is our long-term goal, is to get the water down this area, which we had some bid savings. We thought we'd go ahead and try to participate as a partner to get a little further.
Go ahead.
Was there a reason we didn't ask them to form an improvement district?
Yeah, so for these smaller line extensions, I think that's normally something we don't do. We get small line extensions like this about every year or two. Somebody will extend a water main 100 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet down the road. We haven't had a line extension agreement come through in some time. Somebody that actually says, I do want to get paid back for those. Usually, those are done on their own. We had a couple done just last year. So for these smaller line extensions that are just one, two, three lots that are kind of moving the water down the main, we, I haven't done improvement districts in those locations.
Councilman Adams?
I make a motion.
Oh, I got another comment or question. So some of those houses, aren't they on a shared well up there?
Yes. That's, some of those residents are still on a shared well in that location.
And they will not be hooking up to this, or they have to pay to hook up to this?
They have to pay. So they have to prove they're disconnected from their shared well. They have to pay the capacity fees and the meter fees to hook up to the city system, as well as their portion of the main extension.
So that, the houses you showed, the property that you showed, are they the ones that helped pay for that?
Yes.
So the other ones behind them, if they wanna, who they gonna pay back to? Them or us?
All the parties involved in this extension. So all three of these parties here.
Okay. And the City of Sholo?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Shane, well, now that we bring it to this point, will there be any properties that will have to abandon their well and attach to the city now that it's within a certain distance? Or is there anybody that we're gonna mandate they have to be attached to this, this waterline?
No. So that's done with sewer. So in sewer situations, we require that if you're within 200 feet, you have to connect. That's in our city code. With the water system based on state law and the way our city code reads, anybody can have a well in the city. We don't require you to connect to the city water system. So we're not requiring them, but they are, they're paying to connect, their meter fees.
Any other questions?
And is the plan still at the end of 16th for Arabian horses to be trained on that property still? Is that still?
I don't know.
Mr. Russo's plan at the end of 16th? It's an old city planner joke back when I worked for the city.
Councilman Adams.
I move to accept the waterline extension agreement for the North 16th Avenue waterline extension.
Got a motion? I got a need a second?
I'll second.
Got a second. Goodbye. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passed unanimously. One opposed.
Still waiting for those regular horses.
All righty, next item on the agenda is consideration adoption of resolution number R. 2025-17, accepting donation of land and approving fourth amendment to the Sholo Bluff Agreement. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On December 7, 2010, the city entered into the Sholo Bluff Agreement with the then owners and developers. On February 17, 2015, the city approved an amended development agreement with SRH Holdings as the owner of the property and Sholo Bluff Development Corporation as the developer. The city approved a second amendment to the Sholo Bluff Development Agreement on April 6, 2019 with SRH Holdings as owner and developer. And on December 5, 2023, the city approved the third amendment to the Sholo Bluff Development Agreement whereby SRH Holdings deeded specific land, APNs 210-28-036 and 210-28-037, approximately nine acres for the Sholo Sports and Event Center. As the event center planning has progressed, it has been determined that in order to best suit the Sholo Sports and Event Center project, a different parcel, APN 2010-28-035, would work better than the previously planned parcel, APN 2010-28-037. It is a desire of the parties to modify the agreement with the fourth amendment to the Sholo Bluff Development Agreement to reflect that SRH Holdings will deed to the city approximately nine acres of land dedicated to the Sholo Sports and Event Center project. The proposed nine acres are comprised of parcels described as APN 2010-28- The proposed nine acres are comprised of parcels described as APN twenty-ten dash twenty-eight zero-three-six and APN twenty-ten dash twenty-eight dash zero-three-five. The actual dimensions may be adjusted on the final design. All other terms of the amended development agreement dated February seventeenth, twenty-fifteenth, and amendments thereto shall remain the same. Staff recommends adopting the resolution R twenty-two-five dash seventeen, accepting the donation of land known as APN twenty-ten dash twenty-eight zero-three-five and APN twenty-ten dash twenty-eight zero-three-six, approving the fourth amendment to the Cholo Bluff Agreement, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Can't they just go, we'll give you that, or just give us this? Wow, that's a lot of numbers. Okay, turn it back to the council. Any questions or comments? Or motions?
I have a question. Um, I may, I don't know who this is for. Maybe it's for Anna Morgan or for Bruce. What was, why was it, like, what went into the discussions and why was this parcel better than the other one? Like, what was the factors in determining that?
So the one parcel was, um, intersected by the future Wolford Road. So the one parcel is not completely functional for the event center project. This will allow two parcels. It's not gonna be bisected by the, of the middle of it with a road. So they're just better suited for the event center.
And how much land was, did we have previously that they were gonna donate, and how big is this one, like?
They're still both approximately nine acres.
Brought it all to one side of the road.
Yes.
All that for one side of the road instead of, that's what Wolford Road would split it, so. And I think the future talk was, well, maybe we can use it for parking, but that didn't make a lot of sense either, because it's on the other side of Wolford, so.
I'm just disappointed none of our questions required Bruce to get up here. I'm kind of like, I was hoping it would trigger him to have to get back from
I didn't even know he was here.
From being, sitting in the back all comfortable, so.
Let's, let's think of something.
Think of something to get him uncomfortable, but that'll make, I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Councilman Clark.
Uh, I'll move to adopt resolution, uh, number R twenty-two-five dash seventeen, accepting donation of land known as APN twenty-ten dash twenty-eight dash zero-three-five and APN twenty-ten dash twenty-eight dash zero-three-six, approving the fourth amendment to the Cholo Bluff Development Agreement, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Got a motion? Need a second? I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-five oh-three, authorizing purchase of real property known as APN two-ten twenty-three zero-zero-nine E from Jed Owens LLC. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Owens, on behalf of J E D Owens LLC, approached the city about wanting to sell family property to the city. The property, APN twenty-ten dash twenty-three dash zero-zero-nine E, is approximately forty-nine point seven acres near Cholo Bluff, with portions bordering the Cholo Creek. The city was originally interested in land along the creek for preservation and possible future expansion of the Meadow Park. After several discussions with city staff, Jim Owens made a favorable offer to the, for the entire parcel. The agreement is for the sale of the entire, entire property, forty-nine point seven-six acres, at thirty thousand per acre. J E D Owens LLC would donate four acres along Cholo Creek to the city. They will further discount the sale price by five percent in lieu of the realtor commissions. The donation of four acres is valued at approximately a hundred and twenty thousand. The five percent discount is an additional sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty savings. The adjusted purchase price to the city is one million, three hundred and four dollars, a hundred and sixty. Payments will be made over three years at zero percent interest. The parcel has a couple access easements to the property, including an easement out to the Pinrod Road. The agreement that is attached inside the packet that you received, um, had an agreement which the city and J E D Owens would split the escrow. However, Mr. Owens called today, and due to some circumstances, he asked that the city be responsible for the entire escrow. So he was sent over a, an amended agreement, um, that reflects that the city would pay for the entire escrow amount included. With that, um, the property purchase, um, would allow for the preservation of, along the Cholo Creek and provide for, uh, additional potential uses for the city in the future. Staff recommends adopting the ordinance, number twenty-two-five dash zero-three, for the purpose of the purchase of the property.
Thank you, City Attorney. Questions? Comments?
I would just like to declare a conflict of interest.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Anybody ask any questions or comments? If I could have the city clerk, uh, by unanimous consent, read ordinance number twenty-two-five oh-three by title only, as all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. City of Cholo Ordinance Number twenty-two-five dash zero-three, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Cholo, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of real property known as Assessor Parcel Number two-ten dash two-three dash zero-zero-nine E from G E D Owens LLC.
Thank you, City Clerk. Can I bring it back to the council for a motion? Councilman Whipple.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-two-five dash oh-three, authorizing the purchase of real property known as APN two-ten dash twenty-three dash zero-zero-nine E from J E D Owens LLC.
Got a motion, need a second by Councilman Clark. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution number R twenty-two-five sixteen, adopting tentative budget and establishing expenditure limitation for fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, City, Mayor, Council. I think for the time tonight, uh, tonight we need the council, we're gonna review the tentative budget, and then we'll need the council to adopt. The amended amount is a hundred and thirty-three million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four. Uh, we've been transparent, as we always like to be with our budget process, multiple study sessions, town halls, a lot of staff time, a lot of council time. We appreciate everyone's time and effort that was put into the budget process this year. Uh, when we're building the budget, we try to stick with the council's goals and priorities. We wanna preserve and maintain our infrastructure. We want a good quality of life for our residents and be able to attract people that wanna work here and live here. We wanna provide, uh, community and economic development, and then focus on organization and staff to, uh, promote the city. Our adopted budget versus the actual, looking at the historical for the last four to five years, uh, we're in fiscal year twenty-five, we're at a hundred and twenty-six point five million, and our proposed budget for twenty-twenty-six is a hundred and thirty-three point one million. As you can see, uh, historically, we have underspent the budget. Some of that is due to the fact that we're anticipating grants for bigger projects that did not come through. Some of it has to do with project carryovers and that sort of thing. So typically, we do underspend the budget. This is a look at our revenues, and this includes all sources, including, uh, carryover balances or beginning fund balance, operating revenues, inter-fund transfers, and other financing sources. So for our revenues, our beginning fund balance is fifty-five million. This includes savings and reserves from prior years. We have other financing sources, which is eight million dollars. That's our unanticipated that we can use if we do get awarded grants during the fiscal year that were not programmed into the budget. This allows us to accept those and move forward with projects. Then we have inter-fund transfers, and then last is our operating revenues, and this is revenue that we'll collect from operations throughout the year, and that's at eighty-one million. This is a breakdown of the operating revenues. The taxes is the, the largest, taxes and intergovernmental are the two largest there. We do have the contributions and transfers of sixteen million. And then in operating, eleven point eight million, and then a couple of other smaller ones. On utility fees, we expect to collect nine point seven million, and the water fund, five point nine eight million. And that does include, include an estimate for a CPI adjustment to the rates in January, and the same goes for wastewater, which will be at five million. In the sanitation budget, uh, we have one point eight million. And there will be increases to rates on July first, which we talked about at the last meeting. So the current rate with one regular can and one recycle is twenty-one eighty-five per month. The new rate will be twenty-two eighty-seven, so a dollar and two cent increase, which is a CPI increase based on the water and sewer index of four point nine percent. And then each additional cart, uh, the current rate is thirteen point twenty-five, and the new rate will be thirteen point nine. For local sales tax, we budgeted a conservative number there at seventeen point two-three. As you know, last year we finished at about, uh, twenty point eight, and we're estimating nineteen point one-four this year. That's a conservative estimate. It could be a little higher, but we're gonna be budgeting probably three to four million, maybe five below what our actual collections will be, which will give us some room in the event of a recession or some unplanned event that would cause the, the tax numbers to decrease. For state shared, uh, we're a little bit better than we were, um, actually, yeah, a little bit better than we were in, in fiscal year twenty-six. We budget at ninety-five percent, so we get an estimate from the legal cities and towns that they get from the state, and then we take ninety-five percent of that and program it into the budget. See, our, um, budget figures are slightly less than what the state estimate was provided to us. For intergovernmental, we have twenty-five point eight-three million. The largest chunk of that's for Scott Ranch Road, which an application was submitted by the end of February. Uh, usually by the end of May, I think, is when we'll find out how we did on that. We talked about this during our budget study session, but the federal government normally has one point five billion. In that pot of money, it has been reduced to a hundred and fifty million. So it's about a ninety percent reduction. So our odds of getting that are pretty slim, but we did still go ahead and apply for that. And a couple others that we've applied for is, uh, turf at Nicholas Park, uh, Timothy McKay Park. And on that one, we've had a few questions on that. We're just waiting for the federal government to approve the application. It's already passed through the state, so it's just a timing issue. Lisa reported at our staff meeting that it should, we should know hopefully by the end of June, but there are no guarantees for that. So that number you see there is a fifty percent match. So we'll come up with fifty percent, and then fifty percent from the feds. Uh, several projects in the airport, six, uh, seven point six million, and then in the transit, our fifty-three-eleven grant, one point five million. And any new, uh, grants will come before the council, uh, for acceptance before we are able to get awarded for those. Our expenditures by type, capital and operations are the two largest. Personnel coming in at sixteen point seven percent. And then we have transfers and the eight million in unanticipated is six percent, and then debt service at two point one percent. For personnel, we've added a few positions, uh, half-time in the library, a full-time, parks and facilities maintenance, a full-time in engineering. And then we had, uh, the police department provide some input based on their numbers. They recommended a reduction of one officer and one dispatcher based on their call volumes. And then we have an increase of one in public information, which is basically our, uh, staff there. We had two that were part-time at twenty-eight hours, and they'll go to full-time. They were already getting the state retirement, so they'll go from twenty-eight to forty hours per week, and be considered full-time. And then one full-time equivalent in streets. Um, and then we would also like to add the ASRS rate to slight decrease from twelve point two-nine percent to twelve percent. And that's, uh, that percentage is paid by both the city and the employees that are eligible for ASRS. And the PSPRS, a slight decrease there. The recommended rate is much less than what we're recommending to pay. We've been paying twenty percent. The recommended rate was like eleven point nine. So we'll continue to pay more than what's recommended and try and stay on top of our balance there with PSPRS, so we don't get into a situation like we did back in the early two thousands. This is a look at the chart for the total full-time equivalents. As you can see, we're moving ahead from where we were last year with the increases. This is our personnel by service area. And then our capital and contingencies, we have sixty point three million. General operations, uh, the big number you see there, largely due to the, uh, event center, we have fourteen point three million, budgeted for the event center. If you recall from the last meeting, we had anticipated doing around sixteen million, but due to the expenditure limitation, we had to reduce that amount. The money's still there. It'll just roll over into the, uh, fund balance for the general fund, and we'll be able to have access to it. But with the timing of the selection of the, the contractor and, and working on the design and getting going on construction, it's gonna be a little while before we're ready to access that money. So, uh, additionally, we'll have to go for financing to finance the rest of the project too. So fourteen point three, we feel is definitely gonna be adequate to get us started for fiscal year twenty-six. The other one is, um, large number there is the streets, and twenty-two million of that twenty-eight is for Scott Ranch Road. Any questions on capital? For reserves, our target is three months in operating reserves. And for, for, um, general fund, we're very close to that number, again, with, uh, issues with with the expenditure limitation. Uh, we're not quite there, but very close. And then the same, the wastewater and water are both three months operating. This is the expenditures by service area. Public works forty-one point eight, general government thirty-one, public safety nine point two, utilities thirteen point one percent, and then community services at three point four percent. And this is just the, uh, snapshot of the general fund, a further breakdown of that total. So tonight we need a, adoption of the tentative budget, and that establishes the expenditure limitation of one hundred and thirty-three million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four. Then the budget will be advertised in the paper for two weeks. And then we'll have final budget adoption on June seventeenth, which includes a public hearing. And, uh, we'll discuss the tax levy for the Streetline Improvement District at that time as well, and then adopt the secondary property tax for the Streetline Improvement District on July fifteenth. Available for any questions?
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Vice Mayor.
Just a comment. I'd like to thank you, Justin, for all your hard work, and Morgan, and your staff. You guys do a really great job, and, um, as you know, at least, um, by our state, we're recognized very highly for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
No comments or questions, motions?
I move to adopt resolution number R twenty-two-five dash sixteen, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, at one hundred and thirty-three million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and zero cents.
Got a motion? Got a second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Mayor, I just wanna thank Justin and staff. That's a lot of hard work, and I sure appreciate all you do. And, uh, you're always, when you have questions, you have the answers. You're on top of it, and I just wanna thank you for everything.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, next item on the agenda. At this time, the city council will recess into a special meeting of the Cholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board to adopt a tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-two-five-twenty-six for the district. Mr. Johnson. Soon as I get to it. Wait. Hang on one second. Okay. I will call this board to order, show that all are present, except, except board member Hatch. Uh, at this time, first thing on the agenda is adoption of the tentative budget.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the board's time to, uh, review the tentative budget for this evening. Our tentative budget number is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty. Just to refresh the board, the special district was formed by the property owners of the district in oh-five. It's a separate unit of government from the City of Cholo, and debt issued must be covered by district's assessed value. Uh, the benefit of the debt must be used for district, for the district, for infrastructure improvements. Two separate bonds were issued, a special assessment bond and a general obligation bond. The general obligation bond was paid in full with reserves and additional funding, uh, from the property owner in twenty-eighteen, which leaves the special assessment. Uh, the special assessment bond was two million and fourteen thousand dollars. There's an annual debt service of a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, two hundred and twenty-seven parcels total. 227 parcels total. And Cholo Bluff Development owns 81 parcels. We currently have an unbudgeted reserve of $297,762. Our revenues, we have our beginning fund balance and then our assessment billings. We do two billings per year. In June, a principal and interest, and then in December, an interest only. So we need the board to adopt the tentative budget tonight, establish the expenditure limitation. It'll be advertised in the paper, and then the final budget adoption will be on June 17th, preceded by a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments or motions? Councilman Jud?
I move to adopt resolution number R 2025-01, adopting the tentative budget and establishing the expenditure limitation for fiscal year 2026 at $164,580.
Got a motion? Need a second? Got a second by Councilman Adams? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our special meeting on June 18, 2024. I move, we accept the minutes of June 18, 2024. Got a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. At this time, we will adjourn this meeting. We're going to turn back to our council meeting if I can find it. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is summary of current events.
I have anything there?
Nothing? Anybody have anything down there? I just got, like, I, I think I make this comment every week anymore. It's crazy out there. It's getting really busy, slow down. Me personally love seeing the DPS officers in town. I'm sure the chief and assistant chief, they loved it too. I got to meet all of them. They were at the end of town taking pictures in front of our signs. So my wife goes, oh, you so got to go over there. So I did and went, took pictures with them, got to meet them all. They gave me a coin and, and we're actually following each other on Facebook and I invited them up here anytime they want to come up. So maybe we'll see them again. We won't tell you when they're coming up, but I can tell you, I think they clocked on Thursday or Friday, I don't remember which day, between 10, they clocked on at 10. They were working from 10 to 6. Clocked on at 10 and at the east or the west end of town, there was two wrecks right there by Whipple, within 30 minutes of each other. People trying to turn left out of, off of Whipple. We all know how dangerous that is. But anyway, it was nice to see them up here. They're a great bunch of guys. They were having so much fun. One guy had a car pulled over over here and he gave him a warning because they had to go take a picture with the mayor. So I think that was kind of cool. So they called him here. He was on a traffic stop, said, I got to go. I got to go take a picture with the mayor. So that guy got a warning. So I thought that was really cool. Anyway, be careful. It is absolutely insane out there. Crazy, crazy. It's not going to slow down. City Manager.
Okay, yeah, there's lots of stuff going on. So, you know, we have our farmer's market every Saturday, nine to one at the festival marketplace. This weekend, we have our, starting our first annual Cholo Junior Rodeo this Friday and Saturday at June 6th and 7th at the Linden Valley Arena. It starts at 6:00 PM, includes events such as the parent offspring roping, barrel racing, ribbon roping, mutton busting, calf riding, steer riding and more. So encourage y'all to come out. I know Mike and his crew have been really, working really hard to get that going this first year and hopefully it's a great event. Doug Roberts has already talked about the car show, so I won't repeat that. Next Friday and Saturday, June 13th and 14th is our Cholo Days at Frontier Field. Come out, enjoy those festivities. And there's a lot going on.
Lot going on. Do we have any seconds? Do we have any scheduled special meetings that we know about?
Yeah, so just want to remind everybody of our joint meeting with the Cholo School Board on June 19th at 6:00 PM. It'll be across the, the road at the, in the Deuce of Clubs Conference. 19th at 6:00 PM.
19th?
19th. 19th. June 19th.
Like this, John. Turn that, turn that thing up a little bit. All right. Oh, we're going to executive session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go in executive session. No, we just, oh, that was for the other two. Right. Okay, that's if we needed to. Never mind. Seeing no more business before this council than I know of, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.